If I declare the meeting of the Finance and Governance Committee number 202502 open. I recognise councillor attendance, councillor Jacob Madsen, councillor Nicole Johnic, deputy mayor, the mayor, councillor Harding, councillor Marnie Doyle, councillor Jim Madden and councillor Antonelli should be here shortly and myself. Oh councillor Antonelli, are you online?
Yes, I'm online, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, thank you. There's no apologies, acknowledgement of country, councillor Madsen.
Thank you Chair, Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land and waters we share. We pay our respects to their elders past, present and emerging as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of proud people.
Thank you. Declarations of interest, are there any declarations on this agenda? Councillor Johnic?
Yes, thank you Chair. In accordance with section 150 EM of the Local Government Act 2009, I councillor Nicole Johnic inform the meeting that I have a prescribed conflict of interest in item number six titled Procurement Contract 5601 Garden Organic Material Processing. The nature of my prescribed conflict Chair is that I have three close family members that are employed by Remondus.
And could you just indicate please how you intend to deal with that?
And I intend to leave the meeting whilst discussion and voting occurs, thanks Chair.
Thank you, we don't require a motion in that case. Are there any other declarations of interest? Thank you. There's no business outstanding. Confirmation of minutes, would someone please move a confirmation of the minutes of this committee of the 18th of February 25, moved councillor Doyle, seconded councillor Madden, any discussion? I put that motion all in favour against that's carried unanimously.
Shall I check with the person on team?
Oh sorry, councillor Antonelli.
Yeah, I confirm my vote in the favour.
Thank you, thanks very much, that is unanimous. Officers' reports, this is item two, the information and communications, the ICT policy update, are there any questions for the relevant officer? No, would someone please move the adoption of that, moved councillor Johnic, seconded councillor Doyle, discussion. I'll put the motion all in favour against councillor Antonelli.
In favour.
I declare that carried.
In favour.
Yeah, thank you, I declare that carried unanimously. Item three, the right to information legislative update, are there any questions for the relevant officer?
I do have a question if I may.
Yes, could the relevant officer come forward please? Thank you, could you state your name and position please?
Michelle Pearl, team leader for Governance Services.
Councillor Antonelli?
Yes, thank you Ms Pearl, I note that in the background of the report, it stipulates that the new legislation, the Information Privacy and Other Legislation Amendment Act will commence on the 1st of July 2025. I note also the recommendation is to repeal our existing policy. Is there a reason why we haven't aligned that with that commencement date of the new or the amended legislation?
No, we don't require the policy under the existing act and/or the new act that is coming in, the alignment is simply because we will update our webpage at that point with the new legislation requirements.
I thank you, that satisfies my question Chair.
Thank you, are there any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Would someone please move the report, moved councillor Doyle, seconded councillor the mayor, Mayor Harding, discussion. I'll put that motion all in favour, against councillor Antonelli?
Aye, in favour.
I'll declare that motion carried unanimously. Item four, to establish a schedule of trust for road purposes on proposed lot three in the Nicholas Street precinct, I do have a question for the relevant officer, could the officer come forward please? Thank you, could you just state your name and title or position please?
Good morning, Alicia Reek, Property Services Manager.
Thank you. Question I have, and I know we've had a briefing on this and I certainly found it quite a complex matter, this is land that we hold in freehold at the moment. And the recommendation of be transferred as a trust for road purposes, yeah, which would comply with the original planning approval. My question is this, like just from first principles, I would have thought land that was freehold gave us, you know, absolute control over that, could you just explain why the trust for road purposes is superior to continuing to hold it in a freehold?
Sure, with this particular circumstance, a volumetric lot described is 0.15 metres below the existing road pavement that is actually aware for people walking in the precinct at the moment, so through the initial development approval, 11 Nicholas Street is sitting as one existing lot and there are approval conditions in there in relation to the subdivision requirements. I'd probably have to divert to planning and regulatory services in relation to why it was framed in those conditions of approval, but we have looked at how we can enact both options that were put with that condition, and one was to dedicate it as road or to form a trust. So with the freehold and trust, it does make the clear purpose of the intent to be for a road purpose, but it helps, I guess, essentially retain the visual amenity that we have with the precinct and we can continue to restrict or determine whether other services that enter into the precinct in that volumetric lot are appropriate.
Okay, yeah, perhaps we will get the relevant planning officer, is there any other questions at the moment in relation to the mayor?
If may I, Chair, I'm not sure if you'll be able to answer the planning officers. If this does go through and it's a trust, will the trust be able to make decisions without it coming to council and without having public scrutiny, or does it still come to council if there are any changes?
So as long as it's in relation to the dedicated purpose, so anything outside of that trust would enact a further decision of council, but anything in relation to say, for instance, are you saying for services to go into that area and that, that would be determined whether they meet the relevant requirements of that trust and then it would be a consent process basically.
So would any decisions, whether the land's in trust or freehold, would it still come to a council meeting for public scrutiny?
No, not necessarily, it would be an internal department consent process and it would go to the relevant GM to make that decision and determination.
Thank you.
Any other questions at all? All right, thank you, and the relevant planning officer, thank you. If you could just state your name and title please?
Brett Davy, General Manager, Planning and Regulatory Services.
Thank you, just to hopefully completely clarify this, the current ownership is slightly below the actual level of the road.
Yes, so, yeah, so the volumetric lot, and it's not unusual in this precinct to have some volumetric lots, but it's a lot that, in a traditional sense, a lot is a flat surface and unless there's something stopping it, it goes distance below and above, but it's not stated anywhere. A volumetric lot is a shape that's defined in a survey plan, so it could be some kind of prism, in this case it's a small lot, and I think the heart of the question you're after is what's the superior outcome, whether it's road reserve or a lot in trust.
Yeah, thank you.
So a lot in trust or road reserve both achieve the same outcome, a lot in trust does give us some more control because we have heavy direct tenure, as in we own the land subject to the trust which limits its purpose. The other alternative is to have it just as straight freehold, but there are difficulties in us converting, you know, land that's got a restriction to straight freehold, there's not really a benefit to that, so I would say it is almost irrelevant whether it's road reserve or a volumetric lot in trust, but certainly either gives us what we need.
Okay, are there any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Would someone care to move the adoption of this report? Moved councillor Madden, seconded councillor Johnic, discussion. Now, I'll just say, it is a complex situation, it seems as though the result is similar, but I accept the officers' advice that, you know, in the circumstances that it's probably the better way to go, and of course is in accordance with the planning approval, if we did want to change that, we'd have to change the planning approval. Any further discussion, the mayor?
If I may Chair, probably, and I understand the road reserve versus that volumetric lot in trust, but my, I guess my concern is the fact that the decisions can be made without it coming to the councillors and without having public scrutiny as well, it would be done internally within council, so I guess I seek advice on how do we make sure that that is not removed from the people?
Perhaps the easiest way to address that would be rather than, this is a rather formal legal determination now, but ask the CEO to examine that with a report or advice back to us about the future of that, so that the council or involvement, depending upon the nature of the decisions that have to be made, yeah, can be provided in the way in which you're suggesting.
Thank you Chair.
So can that be done, CEO, as a request, just a general request through the committee, if there's no opposition to that?
And therefore we wouldn't make a decision today, we'd wait till the ordinary or what's the?
Oh, I was feeling that there doesn't seem to be any actual opposition to that, but it's subsequently what the process would be in the future about any decision making made in relation to this land.
I guess until I know that, I can't vote in support of it, until I know what that situation is.
Councillor Doyle?
Yeah, thank you Chair, if I may just add, noting council officers have pointed out, and as with any trust, any actions need to be in accordance with the intent of the trust, so it was pointed out if we were to look to do something outside the intent of the trust, it would absolutely need consent and would likely find its way to us, but happy, these, this is just one of a number of nuances, complexities, I guess through Nicholas Street precinct, the different ownership tenure, we've got, you know, Queensland Rail involved as well for some of the lots, so it is, it's complex and it's technical, so.
I think the mayor's raised the issue about future decision making, some of that might be extremely minor issues and some of them could be, you know, more major issues, is it possible, CEO, to have, to reflect the request of the mayor that we could have some wording for the next, additional wording for the council meeting that would reflect that issue as a separate recommendation to the one today? Is that possible too?
I believe so Chair, yes, thank you.
Would that satisfy you that the, that's prepared, and if it's not available that we take it off the agenda at the council meeting?
Yeah, obviously I can't support this today unless there's something changing the motion that that comes through.
Okay, so the committee's got a.
That doesn't mean if I get the advice by next week that I'd support it, I just need to know that that it's open and transparent.
It's up to councillors, the two possibilities are either to accept this as it is with the recommendation, with the proviso, or the understanding that wording would be prepared for consideration at the council meeting, or that we simply not support this today.
Thank you Chair, I think that obviously the trust deed governs the principles of what can and can't happen, so that's what we need to have faith in, is the principles of the trust deed and obviously it is a complex matter, but I'm happy to support the officers in this complex issue today, thank you.
Any other discussion? No, well, I'll put the motion on the understanding from the CEO that if it is carried, that wording would be prepared for consideration simultaneously at the council meeting, which would reflect or to take into account the issues raised by the mayor. Is there any further discussion before I put the motion? All in favour? Against? The mayor, councillor Antonelli?
Ah, in favour of the motion, thank you.
I'll declare that motion carried, and I will move, time being after 10 o'clock, that the meeting adjourn until 10.20am, does that suit persons? I'll move that, seconded councillor Johnic, discussion, all in favour, against councillor Antonelli? Councillor Antonelli?
In favour.
Would have been an unusual set of minutes without that, but thank you, I'll declare that carried unanimously, thank you.
Is it councillor?
Yep.
Nellie?
Yeah, I'm back. I'm on. You should have me on there, don't you?
We do, and we're ready to go. I'll declare the meeting reopened at ten twenty AM and all members are in attendance with councillor Antonelli online. We then move on to item five, the disposal of easement through Flinders-Gulman Conservation Estate for accessing access to adjoining land. Understand there might be, are there questions that people wish to raise? With relevant officers? No? Will someone please move the adoption of that report? Move councillor Doyle, seconded. Councillor Johnic, discussion. I'll put the motion. All in favour? Against councillor Antonelli?
In favour.
I'll declare that carried unanimously. Move on to item six. This is a matter that councillor Johnic has a declaration as leaving the meeting. I'll move that in accordance with section two five four J three G, negotiations relating to a commercial matter involving the local government for which a public discussion would likely to prejudice the interests of the local government. The meeting move into closed session to discuss that matter.
And councillor, may I add on that normally my chief of staff would leave, but noting the matter of what we do in the waste area, may I also ask my chief of staff to stay in during the closed session?
All right, well, I'll probably not formally in that motion, but as soon as that's carried, I'll just indicate that if that's agreeable to everyone. I'll put that motion or the formal motion to go into the closed session. All in favour? Against councillor Antonelli?
In favour.
That's carried unanimously. May your request for your chief of staff to attend?
We're in closed session, so are we still live? It's just that we usually can't...
Thank you. Thank you for that. It was a lengthy discussion in relation to this proposed contract. Is there a mover for this motion? councillor Doyle, seconded councillor, mayor Theresa Harding? Discussion?
Master said, come on.
Was that your contribution councillor Antonelli?
No, I unmoved it at the wrong time.
Okay.
Mayor.
Chair, I just want to, so obviously we were in a closed session for forty minutes for a reason. We had extensive discussion on a range of matters, which were obviously legally confidential going into the tenders and so on. So thank you Chair for allowing that to happen and thank you to council officers who, well I guess the spotlight in our many questions and queries with this very sensitive matter. I do see this contract to be a step in the right direction, that we do send our green waste to a company that is not at the centre of odour issues that our city is experiencing. Garden organics is not as odorous as the food organics and similar types of waste. And I note that there are currently no local waste companies offering in vessel composting in Ipswich at the moment. Remondus are offering a bespoke facility that will only be accepting green waste from Ipswich City Council and some of our neighbouring LGAs. And I do note that it's pleasing to see that in vessel composting is becoming the industry standard, that Remondus have plans to move in this direction in the next three years. Thank you Chair.
Chair?
No, I thought I heard him.
Yeah.
Yourself, sorry.
I just wanted to congratulate, I just wanted to congratulate the council officers, particularly Mr McAllister, explaining this very complex issue about a contract that potentially will go for ten years. So it's a very long-term contract, but it's an issue that is, as we're all aware, was the odour issue around Swanbank and Ripley, has been an issue as long as I can remember. And it seemed to boil down to one thing and unfortunately that one thing will continue. But this is a step in the right direction for the council to move across to a not a Fogo, a G O, a G O that will produce less odour. And after three years, hopefully earlier, will move in vessel. So it's a step in the right direction. Lot of information for us to digest, but it's clear that who the preferred tenderer is. And I think council officers have answered all of our questions, Chair.
Yeah, and I just might add to your comments and to the mayor's comments as well. It's a very difficult issue, it's been an ongoing issue, it's been an ongoing community issue. There's been a range of issues, of course, legally and also generally within the community. This is an opportunity to start afresh and to consider the tenders that have been received for an initial term of three years and a term of seven years. It's an opportunity of best practice by this council for a matter that is front and centre of many most people's minds in the community. And I would also like to thank the staff. It's a very extensive process and one which, and this is simply a recommendation to the council meeting next week, but it's one which, you know, clearly is in the interest of the city and our residents. Is there any further discussion councillor Doyle?
Thank you Chair, if I may just also add, concur with everyone's commentary here today, acknowledging it is a big issue in our community. And for the last five years, we've been on a journey to get a better outcome for our residents. And I just want to acknowledge Mr Davy and Mr McAllister for their counsel and advice the whole way through our journey around Fogo, composting and the various facilities. These guys know their stuff, so they always give us great technical advice. So yeah, look forward to a better position for residents in the years to come as we, and as individuals, as residents, we all have to get better at dealing with our waste as well. Mayor Harding and I visited Japan, as you all know, recently. And they don't have the problems that we have. So yeah, I think we can learn a few lessons. Thanks.
Thank you. That concludes the debate. You were the mover of the motion. I'll put that motion all in favour. Against councillor Antonelli?
Favour.
I declare that carried unanimously. We'll just wait for councillor Johnic to come back. Thank you. Item seven, procurement preferred supplier arrangement for provision of electrical trade services, councillor Doyle.
Chair, apologies for the lateness, but I do need to declare a conflict of interest. However, noting the sensitivities or the confidentiality around the recommendations, probably need to go into closed session so I can share with fellow councillors my declarable conflict of interest, so that it can be decided.
Oh, okay. All right, let's seek advice. So you're asking us to go into closed session to consider your declaration? Okay.
I think that's because the names of the companies aren't listed, they're confidential. So I think for a councillor to disclose a conflict of interest, they need to disclose the name of the company, so, and that's not listed here.
Is that your preferred method of dealing with it?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
No, this is about the declaration itself, whether it needs to be declared.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure whether you need to name, you can just name that you have, well, if it is in regard to an association with one of those named in the report, I believe you can, you can do it that way without having to go into closed session.
In order, I think it'll be pretty obvious when I reveal the relationship I have with an individual who is connected with one of these companies, who it may be.
I'm just asking the CEO now, I haven't dealt with this situation exactly like that before.
And my apologies for the lateness Chair.
No, that's fine, that's fine. So we're not discussing the actual item itself, this is to consider the conflict. And whether or not, because the legislation is clear that it's only the specified matters from A to J, which can authorise the closure of the meeting.
Could I just say by councillor Doyle disclosing her conflict of interest as she needs to, she'll be identifying a business that's in the confidential paper. So I think, I think if we went to close, that would be good and then obviously her vote coming back to open.
Can she not simply reference them as a number on a certain page of the confidential report?
But she has to explain the relationship, much like, you know, with the Remondus, you explained they had a brother working there when she explains the relationship. It would be identifiable.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'll move that in accordance with section two four five J three E, that's the obtaining of legal advice, which is advice that the CEO could provide or could indicate of the local government regulation two thousand and twelve. The meeting moved in a closed session to discuss that matter of the declaration in relation to this matter. Is there a second, second councillor Madden? Discussion, put the motion all in favour against councillor.
Affirmative.
And I note, I'll declare the motion carried and I note that councillor Doyle did not vote, if that be recorded in the minutes. That's correct.
That's correct. Okay, thank you. We've had a brief discussion in relation to item seven. Councillor Doyle has a formal declaration of a conflict of interest she wishes to raise.
Thank you, Chair. In accordance with section one fifty E Q of the Local Government Act two thousand and nine. Our councillor, Marnie Doyle, informed the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest. In item seven titled procurement, preferred supplier arrangement for provision of electrical trade services. The nature of the declarable conflict of interest is that I have a close association with a family member of one of the preferred suppliers. So we might just amend that if we may, thank you. I, in closed session, declared the facts and the basis on which I'm making the declaration. I invite other councillors to determine if I can continue to participate in the decision process. Based on the facts I have shared in closed session.
Thank you, I move that councillor Doyle participate in votes on item seven.
I'm happy to second.
Because there's no personal or financial benefit to the councillor and therefore a reasonable person would trust that the final decision is made in the public interest. That's second to councillor Antonelli. Discussion, mayor?
If I may, Chair, I note in the previous paper we had, item six, that the supplier's name was mentioned. In this particular paper, the suppliers' names are not mentioned in the public paper, which is what has created this situation. Otherwise, if it was publicly listed, I think councillor Doyle could state openly what that is. But it's in a confidential attachment, so she's managed it that way. So I'll be voting to support your motion, thank you councillor.
Any further discussion? Thank you, I'll put the motion all in favour against councillor Antonelli.
Affirmative.
Thank you, I declare the motion carried unanimously. And would the minutes note, please, councillor Doyle didn't vote in relation to that matter? So we need to discuss item seven now. Is there any questions of the officer?
Through the chair, I do have a question and I'm happy to frame the question in a manner that the meeting does not need to be closed.
All right, could the relevant officer come forward, please? Just your name and position title, please.
Yep, it's Tanya Howan, manager of procurement.
Thank you, councillor Antonelli?
Thank you, Tanya. The question, oh sorry, thank you, Chair. Tanya, my question is just in relation to how it operates between a primary contractor and the secondary. So when would the secondary be called upon or how would they be called upon?
If the primary cannot meet the needs of council. So if we have, say, an urgent requirement that needs to be attended to immediately. If we can't get contact to the primary, then we'll go to a secondary supplier.
So I'm assuming that everything goes to the primary in the first instance, is that correct?
As long as they're able to meet the timeframes, that is the intent. So if there's competing priorities and they don't have the resources to allocate to it in order to meet our business needs. There is an arrangement where we can seek the other two alternatives to do it.
Thank you, that satisfies my question, Chair.
Thank you, any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'll put the motion all in favour against councillor Antonelli.
Affirmative.
That's carried unanimously. Item eight, procurement, whole of government banking services, corporate purchase and travel cards. Any questions of the relevant officer? No? Would someone care to move the motion? Councillor Marnie Doyle, seconded councillor Madsen? Discussion. I'll put that motion all in favour against...
Affirmative.
That's a favour, affirmative, that's from councillor Antonelli. Declare that motion carried unanimously, thank you. Item nine, plant higher wet higher services, increased contract spend. Any questions of the relevant officer? No, would someone care to move that motion, please? Councillor Johnic, seconded councillor Madden, discussion. I'll put that motion all in favour against councillor Antonelli.
Affirmative.
I declare that motion carried unanimously. Item ten, twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six fees and charges. This is for the early approval for animal management, health and regulatory services and selected road regulation fees. Is there any questions for the relevant officer?
I don't have a question, but I would like to suggest a change, obviously, as per our discussion. And my email that I circulated to all councillors regarding entire dog fees, if that's okay.
Yeah, it might be best, you know, to clarify if that's in order or if there's any pros and cons or whatever's being proposed. You do, we do have the relevant officer, just to comment on, I've just got a couple of very minor issues as well. So could the relevant officer come forward, please? Thank you, just your name and title, please.
Good morning, Alicia Conorton, manager for compliance.
Councillor Antonelli?
Yes, thank you, Miss Conorton. I'd just raise the issue, my concern regarding the existing fee for entire dogs. I mean, I just put on record now that I certainly understand the legislation and I certainly understand the need for us to have a much higher fee for entire dogs. But my deep concern is that comparatively speaking, I believe we have the highest fee and quite significantly higher fee than most other councils in South East Queensland. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. I guess as the benchmarking was supplied, Ipswich was the highest for entire dogs, but not for pensioner entire dogs. And that relates to, I think, about seven other local governments?
Thank you, Chair, if I may continue. I would like, what would you see if we were to freeze the entire fee? Noting that our normal de-sexed dogs are one of the cheapest. Do you see there being any difficulty with freezing our fee from this year into next year for entire dogs? And then perhaps that may very well bring us back into a more comparable status with other South East Queensland councils? Would you view that as a possibility?
Oh, is that a question for me? Oh, yes, definitely a possibility. I guess some of the scenarios that I provided was worst case scenario would be... Hold on, just let me get the data, was worst case scenario would be roughly forty nine thousand, six hundred and thirty five. I guess less in projected revenue for twenty five, twenty six. But that is worst case, that is based on everyone using the pay after date, it doesn't take into account the pay before. So it would obviously be less with pay before. And then based on some other stats that I looked at, I think in practicalities, it's roughly would be about ten to fifteen thousand. Based on who's currently paying the fee out of the dogs in that class.
Miss Conorton, do you have an estimate as to how many dogs may be unregistered currently in the city? And more importantly, I guess, do you, and this is speculative, of course. But could it be that such a high fee for entire dogs may also be counterproductive to getting those dogs on the books?
I guess based on data from R S P C A as to statistics for pet ownership. If I look at that data from R S P C A as to the percentage of people that usually own pets. And I guess span it across to what our population is, I would estimate there's approximately ten thousand dogs in Ipswich that have not been registered. Is that a barrier to paying? It's hard to say because I don't know whether they're de-sexed or entire. I think it could be more the fact that people have smaller dogs. Like there's popularity of the smaller breeds that generally don't leave the house. So maybe they don't see value in the regio like that. I guess from my recent analysis of the regio data and stats. It seems to be more related to the follow up. And there's clear correlation between when there was regular and repeated follow up. There was increased payment towards the registrations than when, I guess, the regular follow up was not proceeded with due to... I guess it came about through some resourcing struggles with the labour market and being able to maintain regular staff. So this year, we have some programmes that are about to commence that will target two different categories. One is people who repeatedly don't pay their dog registration. So it'll be a bit of a data cleanse to figure out, are the animals still at those addresses? And then also trying to identify areas where, potentially newer areas within Ipswich City Council. Where there's low dog registration and likely pet ownership that aren't registered.
Through the chair, it will be my intention to request that council consider freezing the entire fee for this year, in the very least. However, I'm more than happy to hear other questions that the councillors may have in relation to that through Miss Conorton.
Just in a moment, I'll ask councillor Doyle. But in the meantime, if you propose an amendment, if you can, not at this stage, but indicate which section and which changes you're proposing when we come back to you. Councillor Doyle?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Miss Conorton. I just have a concern, I understand councillor Antonelli's arguments and concerns around this. He, as he pointed out, has shared an email. My only concern, and certainly the use of the language, freezing fees for an entire dog. Are we potentially sending a wrong message to those that de-sex their dog? In that, you know, if we try and encourage de-sexing?
Yeah. It's a legislative requirement that we incentivise de-sexing or encourage de-sexing in the registration fees. And I think probably if you take into a fact that our de-sexed dogs are one of the cheapest across all the other local governments. It shows that we are honouring that requirement of the legislation.
So by freezing, and I'd like to use a different word to freezing. But if we do freeze the fee for an entire dog. We're not going against the requirements in the legislation.
No.
To encourage de-sexing.
I don't believe so, there's still a significant difference between the de-sexed and the entire. And I guess now that, I guess, the entire dogs has crept up to a rate that is going to go over the two hundred dollar bracket. Then perhaps it's reasonable. I guess that's a matter for discussion, it's a matter for council. But I don't view that we're... that we're, I guess, causing a disadvantage to a de-sexed pet owner because we're still the cheapest out of the local governments.
That was my only, thank you.
All right. Just a couple of things while you're there, and these are in relation to dogs, we'll obviously come back in a moment. On page, these are just, sort of type those with corrections, 5.7, it reads Queensland Racing Integrity Commission members. Now, that, I looked up the legislation and the website, the members of the Queensland Racing Integrity Commission, there's two or three commissioners, I think it should read Queensland Racing Commission, Racing Integrity Commission registered dogs rather than the members, because there'd be only two or three of them who could come to Ipswich and not pay for their dog registration. I think it's been there for a while, but it's not the members of the commission who get the concession, it's the ones that I'll propose, subject to any other advice, under 5.7, that Queensland, did it read Queensland Racing Integrity Commission registered dogs? Because people register the dogs with the commission.
Yes, I see your point, yeah.
Okay. The other one is, I typed it, on page 29, under three road regulation, withdrawing and discretionary principles for waiving fees, we've got principles spelt out as in school principles rather than P R I N C I P L E S, could we get that corrected too? I do remember getting the cuts from the Christian Brothers for things like that with the leather strap. Oh no, that was the other kids, I'm sorry, that must have been the other kids. That's fine, to get that. Is that, those two changes acceptable to the mover and seconder? Okay. All right, I think we might be back to you councillor, oh, is there anything else around the table, otherwise we go back to councillor Antonelli? Yes? Oh, sorry, yeah, not yet, so we'll come to that in a minute. Whoever moves can may move with those two amendments, thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Councillor Antonelli, you'll propose an amendment, I take it, when we move and seconded the recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. Or do we have a mover and seconder, please? Moved councillor Johnick, seconded councillor Doyle, is that with those two amendments that I suggested? The one about principals and one about commission members? Fine, discussion.
If I, if I now...
Yes, councillor Antonelli, yes, sorry.
Yeah, sorry, my apologies. I'm just seeking an amendment to 5.2 and 5.4 of the fees and charges, 5.2 being to dog registration per entire dog and 5.4 being dog registration per entire dog pensioner, that the fees for the year 2425 are being endorsed as the fees for year 2526? Is that the correct...
Could I just say that whatever's been moved and seconded, for example 5.2, dog registration, entire dog, it reads now $202. What the amendment should specify to delete 202 and insert a particular figure?
Very well. So to delete $202, inserting $193 for the pay by date?
Yes.
In the pay after date, that 232 be removed and replaced with 223? That's under 5.2. And then under 5.4, for entire dog pensioner, that the fee of 97 be removed, replaced with 92 for the pay by date, for the pay after date, 112 be removed and replaced with 107.
Okay. If I'm clear with that, so that's technically to reinstate the current figures, but the amendment specifies the changes, so that's four changes, is that acceptable to the mover and seconder?
It is, just noting that the increase column of percentages will just need to be nailed out as well.
Yeah, but in the document, this is attachment one.
Yes.
Yeah, there's no percentages in that document, there is in attachment two, which is the first document.
I'm mistaken, thank you Chair.
Okay, does the seconder accept that? Okay. So that becomes the motion. Does councillor Antonelli, or is there anyone else who wants to speak to the motion, two or four again?
If I may.
Yes, thank councillor.
Just briefly, yes, thank you Chair, just the reason for the amendment, of course, Mayor, is the fact that, as I raised earlier in questions, Ipswich is regarded as having the highest fee for entire dogs and obviously, whether you be a pensioner or not, a fee that is such a high, so highly set, is probably going to be something that's going to, some people are going to struggle to pay obviously. I just would like to see us be more comparable with other South East Queensland councils in that regard. I also have had discussions, obviously, with the department about looking at some other initiatives with respect to responsible pet ownership over the next 12 months, a passion of mine, and I just hope that my fellow councillors support the motion as is.
Thank you, any further discussion? I'll put the motion all in favour against councillor Antonelli.
Affirmative.
That's carried unanimously. Item 11, monthly financial performance report. Any questions of the relevant officer? No, thank you, someone care to move that? Moved councillor Madden, second councillor Johnick, discussion. I put the motion all in favour against councillor Johnick. Yeah. Councillor Antoni-
Affirmative.
I declare that motion carried unanimously, there are no notices of motion, there are no matters arising as far as I'm aware. Questions or general business? No, thank you, I declare the meeting closed at 11:41am.